Let's call this meeting over and we'll start off with the My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, republic which stands one nation, and as well liberty and justice for all. Introduce a couple folks that some of you may not know before we appoint them. But Ted Minor, who's been helping us out on the Policy Committee for the last few years. And a lifetime resident graduate, so I'd like to welcome him here tonight. A class later, probably since you don't have an agenda and aren't pervy to all the information, you can pretty much just observe, but it'll be a good start. How the meetings are on and stuff. And then our other fellow is Chris Spencer, and I've gotten to know Chris over the last few years. I think he's gonna be a great addition to Chatham Board. He's got a couple kids, three kids? Four kids in school.
Are two of them still not?
Okay, that's what. And so he's gonna be with us for a while, and I think he will add. Without going much further, unless anybody has any questions, I'd introduce you guys last meeting and we talked about just so it seems rushed. There's been some, a little bit, back and forth. So we're gonna move forward then. Make motion R 30. It resolved that the Board of Education appoint Ted Minor as a member of the Chatham Central School District Board of Education effective November 10th, 2020, until the next annual election on May 18th, 2021.
Come on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions, comments? Alright. R 31. It resolved that the Board of Education appoint Christopher Spencer as a member of the Chatham Central School District Board of Education effective November 10th, 2020, until the next annual election on May 18th, 2021. Can I get a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys, and Deb will now swear yea. I don't know if we've done two at once before, have we?
Back his mask. Mr. Meyer, I'm gonna have you start first. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education in and for the Chatham Central School District according to the best of my abilities. Hi, Christopher Spencer.
Hi, Christopher Spencer.
You solemnly affirm.
You solemnly affirm.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
In and for the Chatham Central School District.
In and for the Chatham Central School District.
According to that.
According to that of my abilities. Thank you.
Sign right here.
Thank you, guys, for stepping up. Welcome to Chatham Central School Board. We'll move right along and ask for a motion to approve the present agenda. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right. Thank you. Public comment. Do we have any public out there with the hands up? Do we have public?
Yep, we have seven attendees. And just gonna check to see if anybody. I see no one right now with their hands up.
Okay. Board comment, this is a section that we leave open for board members to comment on. Sometimes we have activities since we've met last in the school, or latest news, or things like that. It's just a little section that you can comment on.
So since we met last, I went to the virtual MISVA business meeting. I will, I have to say, I don't think the format really did their process much justice. But it was interesting to see how the other school districts, you know, in our association are lobbying. It did seem that it had some really speakey wheels, you know, and perhaps some well-informed speakers that didn't get a chance to speak. And I think I blame the virtual format. It's too bad they didn't have a request for comment process, you know. It seems like this is the beginning of what could end in, you know, stateable rulemaking or lobbying efforts. And there's a lot of really smart people that don't get a chance to speak. I don't know. Probably I'll be making some recommendations to affect to Brian or whoever would be the right contact over there that they think about. They're gonna continue with that next year, this is the.
We'll probably reach out to you now that you're, they have your name to fill out.
It may. I mean, they did, but I think, you know, I, it was more of the effect of what did you think of Zoom, you know? And there were certainly a lot of people that didn't know how to use the tool, but, you know, really, you've got hundreds of, hundreds of people in a meeting. And unless you get in line and you speak, you're not even visible, you know? So, you know, when you're, when you're in a physical room, you at least can see bodies moving back and forth. You can see how people are hedging.
Were they able to, were they able to have good arguments?
No. There was, the debate was pretty flat, you know? There were some noisy people. It was not effective, like back and forth. People weren't really replying to each other, so. But in any case, mostly came to good, good movement and nerfed on some issues, but. That's my observation. Maybe someone else get a turn next year, but.
Well, thank you for doing it, and how many hours did it take?
It was four hours or so to get through the 27 items.
Wow.
It was like.
So the Zoom probably slowed, slowed it a little bit. Plus, there was a lot of items.
There was an awful lot of overhead, but I'm not sure that the, the meeting format overhead, like, yeah, there was a lot of that that was digital, like switching cameras and stuff. That happens in a physical room, too.
Yep.
I think it's, was it that, that's how long it is usually, right?
It's been that long.
Yeah.
But it was a, it was a strange year. One, one year, there was, everybody, it was probably about the same amount of, I don't know, there might have only been about 25. But everybody used and then some of their time, of their clock, and the lines were, and then they had the master clock of the whole subject, too. And they were getting asked to extend that, and it was up to the panelists.
What, what I felt was really missing was the, so there's an opportunity for the proposing school district, the sponsor, to state their piece in like a paragraph. And then the, basically, the Agenda Committee, right, the Policy Committee, has their recommendation. It's a few sentences. There is no opportunity for school districts that are well-informed and have researched this thoroughly and have a really, like, well-formed opinion to put in writing their statement.
Oh, wow.
So.
So that's not the way it is live.
That's not the way a rulemaking works anywhere else in government.
Right.
You put a proposal out, people comment on it, if they're smart, you know, other people.
So hopefully they'll adjust on that and figure out a way, a better way.
I don't know. I mean, it's a 100-year-old format, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they should have known it was coming. You would have thought they would have mocked it, you know, some previous ones or something to test it out, but. Well, thank you for spending four hours of your day representing Chatham.
Yeah, their lobbying agenda becomes a pretty powerful force for rulemaking at the grievance level, but also inside the governor's office. It is the School Board Association.
The United States.
It's non-governmental.
We'll be getting a lot of emails from them now you sign that paper.
Yeah, they'll keep you informed. Well, once again, thank you, Matt. Does anybody else have any comments?
Thanks, Matt, for doing that. Thank you.
Now that MED, has the, have the MED teacher, the parents now let everybody know who's coming, who's going?
Microphone?
Oh. It's on.
Yep. Pull it up closer.
Have the parents at MED, where do the numbers stay? Do we know how many are coming back, what's going on?
And I've, and Kristen, John, and, and Brian, and Mike are on the call. I'll talk a little bit why they're virtual and not here. Kristen, if I misspeak, I'm gonna promote, just raise your hand and, and I'll promote you so you can fill in the questions. But in general, the quarter at the high school ends before the trimester at MED ends. So I think we're just about at the point where the deadline for MED is now occurring. It's like this week or later, or maybe even the 16th, I think. However, in both accounts, we are not seeing a rush back to in-person that we were concerned about. As you recall, we, we designed our program based on what parent, parent requests were for the first, the beginning of the school year. And we are, in a lot of cases, at our maximum capacity due to social distancing. And we were very concerned because we've had to date a very good track record with our, our safety. And so we thought that perhaps a lot of people would rush back in. That is not the case. In fact, I believe at the high school, and again, John, Kristen, it's, John at the high school said it's pretty much a wash. He has as many people coming back as he has going out, and I don't think it's anything different by a few kids. I know that, I know for a fact that the middle school is relatively the same, and same at MED. So nothing extraordinary to change our numbers. In terms of.
Class size.
It's between nine and 15, depending on the size of the room. Yep. And, and we're still at about 25% of our enrollment is considered full remote. So we're still running around those numbers. I believe at last count, it was somewhere in the vicinity of about 104 students at MED were full remote. It varies a little bit by grade level, but.
And that doesn't, and that doesn't include the kids who are not being taught, you know?
No.
Those numbers are not there.
Totally separated from that.
So I, I forgot to make a disclaimer to our new board members, and, but we record every meeting. That's why we're speaking with mics. You'll get a handbook also that we've worked on in the past. Yeah, oh, nice. And that's gonna help any que, really, it's really thorough. And all the questions that everybody's ever had over the last 15 years is in there probably, and so that's gonna help a lot. And this also helps Deb with the minutes, plus we, we like to try to be as public and open as we can. So this is, these air afterwards.
They are uploaded to our YouTube site for viewing.
So. So I just need you guys to know that we're being recorded.
Deb is also gonna reach out to you at your convenience over the next few weeks to come in and spend a few minutes, or even over Zoom, so that I can share with you some of the highlighted items from the handbook and just have a conversation about how we can help you be successful as a board member and not necessarily turn this into a whole nother, a whole nother job. You know, let us, the team here at Chatham work for you when you need information or you have any questions, so. Absolutely.
And you both have my numbers, so. And so one of the other reasons that I want to push to get in and sworn in is because it may be coming up before the end of the meeting, but I have a feeling that we're gonna probably go virtual. So is that a problem with either of you guys to do Zoom? So something that a lot of the board members have agreed to. Dr. Sal is pushing administrators and stuff, and it just makes sense right now with possible another, you know, rise and just, you know, it's, it's, me as a business owner, it's important to me because with the board health involved now, I, I'd hate to have a quarantine situation over, over meetings or something like that. Not saying I'm so afraid of the alternative, but I don't wanna get shut down for two weeks, so. So I think that, you know, I don't know, I don't think we have to talk anymore on it. We'll make that decision at your side, probably.
Yeah, I mean, we can, you can just have a discussion, right?
Matt?
Just a quick comment. I think, you know, as a policy body, we've got a pretty important role to, in terms of messaging culturally across the school. So Sal, whenever the seas shift here, we're, we'll support whatever message you think is appropriate at the time, and right now it seems like due diligence and vigilance is a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the board, we were very cognizant of the fact that our students were coming back in person and that we felt the board should come back in person to show that we, you know, we were, we're handling all the protocols correctly and stuff like that. But now strategically, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have administrators in the same room, board in the same room, when we can effectively meet virtually. And that would be my recommendation, of course, it's the board's purview, but, you know, and this is, this is your board comment. This would be a good time to kind of, kind of come to a consensus as to whether for the next couple of meetings, take it a meeting at a time, take it a couple of meetings at a time. But you're seeing it all around. Soon he's shutting down, you know, institutions are becoming.
I mean, we could almost get a consensus right now on that subject.
Should we, should we just decide right now?
Yeah, I think we might.
And then, and then revisit it at the end of the year?
We know, we know that the executive order goes to, yeah, and that's likely to be, so what if we take it a couple of meetings at a time? We wouldn't wanna go past the authorization that we have to do it. Our December meeting is a little bit later than that, though, right?
Seems pretty unlikely that they're gonna.
Yeah, so we could, you could put some sort of disclaimer in there, right? We will stay virtual for the rest of the year as long as the governor allows it or something like that.
Deb, you.
That, that makes sense.
Your yes?
I mean, it, we, it isn't like we didn't function efficiently last spring and summer when we were meeting virtually.
You know, a lot of it was, we thought we'd have some more public when public was able to come and we wanted to get the message out and answer questions. But I think everybody up till now is pretty Zoom-ready, I would say, you know, across this community, so.
Follow-up question here. Obviously, there's a, there's a criticality risk in current, in terms of if there's some kind of, if the whole leadership team's in one room, right?
Yes.
That can become a problem, right? Should we extend this to, to subcommittee? Does anyone else have feelings on that?
I'd say leave it up to the.
To the committees?
Committees. And I think that's probably, everybody's probably feeling the same way about that, too, but I don't wanna stick for every committee.
Quite honestly, it was gonna be my recommendation to the Policy Committee to consider that for next week. In finance.
Alright, so I'm for a meeting virtual as long as we can. Pat? Pat agrees. Denise? I know it's a little tougher for you, but. It's okay? There you go. Yeah, I know you like it. And you gotta, you gotta at least.
I'm a Zoom expert.
At least dress the top up. No more pajamas. Destiny, you're fine.
Yeah.
Alright.
Nobody knows what is called the second bucket underneath.
Yeah.
Just no pajamas on the top.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and that's peace out of the, no, now we know where we're going next, next meeting. Does any other board members have any other comments?
Just a, just a thing. I talked to the National Honor Society last week and a couple of eighth graders about like college and leadership. It was a really cute, kinda cool classroom call. Students were engaged, it was well-veered experience, nice. I think it was the day after the election, so it was a pretty good event.
Excellent. Good, thank you. Alright, we're gonna turn it over to you, Sal.
Okay, tonight I do have a few things for all of you. So first of all, congratulations, Chris and Ted, welcome to the board. And again, as I said, anything that my team can do to help make your transition into a board seat smooth, please let us know. Don't hesitate to pick up the phone or drop me an email at any time. Along the same lines, I was, you're reminding me, Destiny, that next Monday, the 16th, we'll have our virtual National Honor Society induction ceremony. This year it's going online, and yours truly will, will be there online to say a few words, but Megan Connolly is handling that here at the high school, and we're doing that as a, as a virtual event. And then tomorrow, and I have, we have Mr. Burns on line here. I believe the middle school is putting together a virtual Veterans Day celebration that they'll be releasing. And if I'm correct, it contains some of the imagery like it has in the past of veterans who are associated with students and staff here in the community and in the school district. So we look forward to seeing that. I know there's some pre-recorded videos that will go along with that to celebrate our veterans, an important moment in our nation's history to honor those who have served our country, and also take a moment to honor those who are in active service as well. Yes?
Will the community, will that be an open mic or is that just amongst the school?
No, we'll, we'll make sure that that gets posted on what, on the website and on Facebook so that it all can see. It's a public event typically when it's in person. I don't, I don't think we'd have any issue with that. And we'll ask Adam to do some publicity on that. Alright, so a couple of things. As you know, some of the cases of COVID in the county are on the uptick. You might recall that I participate in a weekly meeting with the Columbia County Department of Health, and our nurses participate in a bi-monthly call with the Department of Health and the public health nurses in the county with to stay up to date on all the latest and greatest on COVID. We are very fortunate, every time I say that, I take a deep breath. Some of our neighbors have been dealing with active cases within their school, and we're learning from them. We keep note of some of the things that they've done and some of the best practices that they've developed. But honestly, my decision to move virtual for all the meetings in terms of administrators, teacher leaders, grade level groups, departments, really was born out of a discussion at the superintendent's level at Questar as a recommendation that, you know, it doesn't make sense to put all these people in one room and then take everybody out at the same time. So that's why we're moving in that direction. I sent, and I sent an email today that I copied the board on in terms of that mandate. No more meetings of three or more people for more than 10 minutes, which is typically the threshold that contact tracers come into a district. If someone is, is positive, they start to go back 48 hours from when they were symptomatic and find out who they've been in contact with less than six feet for more than 10 minutes, and that's kind of where they start. So it's very consistent with our, with our message. Next week, we're gonna be updating the COVID survey. We do a daily health screening as per the guidance from New York State. We're gonna be changing the questioning just a little bit, be a little clearer. And we're gonna ask all staff to do that on a daily basis, not just when they're coming to work. So a couple of small changes coming next week. We'll communicate that because the parents who complete the survey every morning, it'll look just a little different, and we wanna make sure that everybody's aware of that. Oh, as you know, we, again today, experienced some internet connectivity issues as I reported to the board and have over the last, what seems to be a month or two. We again are chasing yet another variation of a cyber, cyber attack. It's called the denial of service attack. Thankfully, Matt has helped us understanding some of the complexities of this. We continue to explore three parallel paths. We explore the path of trying to figure out who might be trying to infiltrate our network from a, from an intelligence perspective, and then several different types of mitigation strategies that are available out there. I've been a little vague intentionally because I don't wanna give away our, our strategy in terms of how we're dealing with this. But I will reassure our parents who've reached out to me and our community that we have engaged with very well-qualified individuals, people similar to Mr. Fisher, who have the expertise in the field to help us figure out what the best solution to this is. It is extraordinarily frustrating for everyone, including the team. Again, today, we lost three hours of precious instructional time, and that's never a good thing, especially for those learners who are fully remote. I do wanna, I did copy the board on an email today, just reiterating that this, the nature of this attack is flooding our connections with traffic. It's not exploiting our network or extracting any personally identifiable information or data. So we have not had a data breach or security breach. It's really more of a nuisance and annoyance by flooding our connection with traffic. And I'd welcome Matt later to expand on that if he would like. We continue to explore options, not only on our own behalf, but several other districts locally. Questar, Three Bosse's, and another school district within Bosse's are experiencing similar problems. And so we're also working as a collaborative to see if there's any commonality between them and if there's any connection to it, and whether the solutions that we put in place can benefit all three of us and perhaps even provide some economy of scale in terms of cost sharing. So we continue to explore that. With that said, the administrators reached out to me. I was on the call here, thank you. We're all exacerbated, and we had a very, a very serious conversation on how this is such a disservice to our students that we need to kind of take divisive action. And what we decided to do, and you've seen the communication that went out this afternoon, is we, once again, and I know this is extremely disruptive to our parents, but we've decided to go fully virtual grades six through 12 this Thursday and Friday. We will be in-person K-5. It's a strategy that we used several weeks ago that worked out really well. By providing, by allowing our students to go full virtual and allowing our teachers to teach from home, we're not susceptible to any of the potential attacks that might come our way over the next few days as we look to put in one of the phases of our mitigation strategies. We're working very feverishly with a couple vendors, and we're very hopeful on, hopefully tomorrow, if not Thursday, I will know more about the feasibility of getting something in place by this weekend that will begin, begin the first phase of our attempt to have more of a permanent solution in place. Because of that, we, you know, the decision was made so that we lose no more instructional time with our students. And again, we, although it's not that our elementary students don't need and our elementary teachers don't need access to the internet, they can just function a little better than some of the secondary teachers without it. And so we also know that that's a challenge for parents in terms of childcare and in a, kind of in an attempt to find a solution that's kind of feasible for all the parties involved. That's why we. That's why we split it up. So right now, Thursday and Friday, K five uh, will come into school, um, bust in just like a normal day and six through twelve will be full virtual. We're obviously off tomorrow for Veterans Day and Monday, if you recall, was a full remote day anyway. Monday was gonna be a full remote day for professional development. Students will be engaged uh, with their teachers uh, and in the courses from eight to ten thirty and be assigned independent work the remainder of the day. And then the rest of the day was going to be dedicated to teachers to share best practices and to participate in professional development directly related to improving their practice as it relates to remote learning. Um, you know, they we we did a nice job again in the spring pivoting. Uh, there was professional development uh, over the summer and our teachers have done a wonderful job with the opening of school, but now they have learned certain lessons from their colleagues. And uh, it's a time to share with each other and help build a capacity to become even better at what we're doing. So that Monday is one of the two days that we've selected to do that. The other day is December, Monday, December fourteenth. So Monday was already a full virtual day. So right now, um, we will not have students, um, well, we'll have K five students back Thursday, Friday. No students uh, at all here on Monday. And that gives us a chance to take a deep breath and not have any potential um, cyber attack derail us from delivering instructional services to our students and give us some breathing room till Tuesday of next week where our hope is that we have at least the beginnings of um one of the phases of our mitigation strategy. Um, and I'll be be open to answering any questions after the next couple items. Winter sports, um, we don't know what the prognosis for winter sports are. The best that we have been told is right now, there's a consideration that low-risk sports, things like um, indoor track and swimming um, may be allowed. All the high-risk sports, basketball, volleyball, less so. Uh, but we're waiting for the governor and the um Athletic Association to give us some guidance in that regard. So if you may have recalled that we did put out a communication to parents. We have students who've already signed up and indicated interest in winter sports. So we're ready to go if we get the green light, um, depending on what sport it is. You know, there's some thought out there that um, we're doing trying to do such a great job in keeping students safe during the day that um, there are some superintendents who feel that sports, um, if they're higher risk are just kind of counterproductive. You know, we're trying to do a good job of day, but yet we're putting kids close together. So um, there is some dissension in terms of um, where people stand on whether sports should take place or not. The only other thing that's a couple of things real quick. Um, we had a couple of questions in terms of ski club. We typically run a ski club in all three of our buildings. Uh, that is not taking place this year, but like several other districts have done, uh, they've made um, arrangements with some of the mountains that we visited to provide um, opportunities for students to ski with their families outside of a ski club. So we're gonna be sending out information tomorrow to those families that have had a couple emails this past week. Uh, thank you to um, to Brett Fortran, who reached out to uh, a couple of the mountains and put together the uh, communication that'll go out tomorrow so that if parents are of students who have skied in the past through the ski club will be able to kind of stay um, get some exercise and get out there and do some skiing this summer or this summer, this winter um, through this program. And I mentioned uh, I mentioned Monday. So I'll open it up for any questions or clarifications that people might have on um what's going on? Yes?
I have a question about the children that lose
Yeah.
On buses. Now, those schools adhere by the same um, regular regulations that we do about the fever, et cetera.
Yes.
Because those children are getting back on our buses and coming back to chat.
Right. All all schools of New York State Charter, private are subjected to the New York State guidelines.
Same thing.
Department of Health guidelines, yes. I do want to clarify, uh, we are only doing um, daily health checks in the morning.
I know.
Um, so to imply that um, they're getting checked again before they get on the bus to go home, that I don't believe that's the case anywhere.
School that they're coming from back to us.
No, and students are only required to do that uh, in the morning upon uh, getting on the bus and going to their school.
They're still following our protocols with the social distancing and
Oh, yeah.
But but they would also, it that's, I I guess, let me offer you what a typical day might be like, too. If a student develops symptoms during the day, develops a fever or any of the COVID symptoms, they are directed to the school nurse, they're put in an isolation room and their parents are contacted and the expectation is that parents can come in between, you know, half hour and forty-five minutes to pick up students. Other schools are likely following that same protocol. So if a student um, were to be transported on one of our buses and um, develop symptoms during the day, that particular school would um, would handle that. If and that's you're talking about private schools, that would be the case for out of out of district placements as well. So the other scenario there are students who attend privately or um, students who are placed in out of district schools, but there are students. Um, those those um, schools all maintain uh, nurses and it's not, it's it's happened where a student might become ill during the day, that that nurse at that facility will contact their parents. If they're having problems contacting their parents, they'll contact our special ed director and we will help mitigate that and get that student student home. So that would be uh, the way that would be handled.
Thank you.
Yes, Chris.
No, I was talking about the uh, the network issues, internet issues.
Yeah.
Is there any relationship to like the bandwidth availability or?
Yeah, no, we we have we have um, significant bandwidth. Um, although we were concerned prior to going to full remote, whether we would have enough, we've not run into any bandwidth issues as at all. Uh, in fact, um, our provider is very flexible in terms of the dynamic connection. We burst above our kind of the the standard rate, but can um, aggregate bandwidth has not been uh, an issue. The nature of the attack is a directed um, DOS attack on on us. Uh, so it's really flooding our connection. And so and we've done some testing. Um, so they have expanded our connection and the attack increases. We've expanded our connection and the attack increases.
So it's not just the Chinatown District. You mentioned there's other people.
There's two other entities that ironically are are chasing a similar problem than than we are. Um, and actually, there was an article last week in one of the trade magazines where cyber attacks on schools are are um, at an increase and and probability is because a lot of students are home. And it doesn't take a large or a lot of sophistication to do a little research on how to become this disruptive as a student and be malicious in terms of attacking a school. Uh, that information is readily available on the internet. So um, what we what we were looking for in addition to pursuing a mitigation strategy ourselves is we were looking to see if there's any commonalities between students attending the different programs that that we share. Um, and the attacks are slightly different in each of the three cases, but still not nonetheless uh, any less disruptive to these entities as well. And everybody has a slightly different situation. You know, one school district has, um, the all three entities have different internet service providers. So the internet service provider is not common to the three entities. And internet service providers have different capacities as to how they can assist on those districts in terms of the resources they have to help mitigate it. Um, the four entities that I'm thinking about, each of them have a slightly different capacity to help solve this problem. Be happy to.
We can probably get into a little bit more of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So
Yep.
The other school district that we're having similar issues. Do they have issues today or not?
It's they're not always coincident to each other. Um, we have um, we have plotted, we've taken all of our dates and times and we juxtapose them on a calendar to see. Um, I don't want to go into a lot of specifics, but they're not, they don't mimic each other one for one.
Any other question? Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was one. I did want to pass it off to Mike to update you on one small item. Uh, the end of the end of last week, we received notification, you may have also received it in terms of uh, your NISBA update. A little bit of a left uh left turn here. Um, we received notification that our transportation aid or last year during the period where we were shut down and we maintained our um, drivers to deliver food and um and materials to students might be in jeopardy. Um, so I'm gonna have Mike talk a little bit more more about that. Education law does require transportation aid to be tied to transportation of students when all of us pivoted and and in the spring um, kept um employees employed. Now we're we're finding out that
And our lunch program going.
Yeah, uh, the lunch program is less of an issue because we did feed the kids, but uh, having our drivers deliver food, which is what districts did all around the region. Um, and because of the transportation aid, um, different districts are being impacted by this differently. And we're talking hundreds of thousands dollars. I'll let Mike talk more about that.
Yeah, so for, we got the letter, uh, state planning, it's working with the, you know, they're gonna try to check to see if they can get this changed because obviously it's gonna be a big impact for districts. We rely, we get about thirty percent aid on transportation. So it's an impact, but it's not like some of the districts are looking at, you know, they get eighty, ninety percent aid. So it's gonna be a huge impact for them. But for our, uh, so we get about eight million in state aid, uh, round up, about eight hundred thousand dollars comes from transportation. And the way that that works is we spend the money last year, we get reimbursed thirty percent this year. Um, so those months I talked, I didn't, you know, I didn't analyze this. I just kind of ballparked it, but you're looking at March eight, you know, mid-March, April, mid-June, thirty-five, forty percent of the, so you know, we could be looking at a two hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. Um, now, everyone submitted on our ST threes, we have to submit all these expenses to the state. That was, that's been done. This letter came out after. So I'm not sure how we're gonna go back and, you know, they're gonna have to go check, you know, what did you do and did you do like food service or what did you do with the transportation expenses? So that, you know, this is a significant, you know, we've been talking about this um, in in general, just state aid in general, we're gonna take twenty percent rate, you know, all these numbers are up and down. They came out with another report, they're way behind, obviously. But they're relying on this federal money. I still, I still believe we're gonna get some federal money. We always have in the past. Um, I don't know how much. But you know, hopefully we get we get some to offset that. Um, but this, you know, this is just another example for for, you know, this is this could be another impact to us. But remember, last year, I I put our spending freeze on. We didn't spend as much in transportation. We cut a lot of costs. So we banked one point four, you know, went into, you know, one point seven, but about one point four went into for this year. One point four million. So transportation, you know, there was about two hundred fifty thousand in savings last year compared to a typical year because we didn't have the budget expense. So you know, that money is, you know, it's not quite offset, but we're offsetting a lot from last year. And I said, I'm gonna bank that money to offset this year. We knew this was gonna be a very tough year. So we can get through this. And we have our reserves that we built up. I've been here eight years. We built up reserve for these type of situations. So for us, it's not the end of the world. We're gonna have to get through it. You know, it's just, you know, how long are we going through and is there gonna be any funneling? But that is the one offset is we did bank a lot of this money to cover that. But that was just another thing that just came out and we're gonna argue that to say, you know, they told us to feed the kids, they told us, you know, I'll do all these things. And all of a sudden, you know, are they gonna pull that money on us or not? So so we will, you know, we'll keep you updated on that.
Department of Budget.
Yeah.
And that's the frustration that the, you know, the groups like NISBA, New York State Council of School Supervisors and and those advocacy advocacy groups are working on. You know, the governor came out and said, we want you to continue to create, have childcare for, you know, um, essential workers. We want you to um, be able to feeds, feed children. We want you to be able to maintain um, workforces so that, you know, if we can mitigate the impact of 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 COVID. And then at the end of the day, then the the bottom door opens up and there's no support financially. So that's that's where we're a little bit frustrated.
Matt, I'm gonna
Uh, yeah, we're just, you know, we're getting with that December timeline where I guess uh, New York is gonna decide whether they're gonna make some updates. Um, whether the federal money is coming or not coming, it seems unlikely that's gonna happen in the next three or four weeks. So what does that do in terms of, are we expecting an update, updated guidance on the on the overall uh cuts?
Yeah, right, right now, they're they're just deferring to what they're saying, you know, if you don't get federal money, there's gonna be cuts, but they're not, they're not putting that out there because what they said earlier is they didn't want to see all these schools. Remember, they cut all these jobs and all that. They didn't say they didn't want to see that. They said these aren't guaranteed cuts yet. So it's kind of a schools that rely heavily on state aid, you know, we we get thirty percent, seventy percent from taxes. If you have the flip and you're getting seventy percent of state aid, those schools are the ones that are cutting severely because they just don't have the money. Um, we've been able to take a, you know, a leveled approach because we had the reserve, we've been building it up over years. We plan for this. Um, we get thirty percent. It's gonna be hard, you know, you know, but we're gonna see what it is. But they're still saying we're, you know, we're waiting on a federal money. I still see federal money coming.
Yeah.
Especially with, you know, I see that happening.
I was gonna get that question. Are you talking about that ten percent that we've been talking about off the planet?
Uh, well, it's maybe it's twenty percent, maybe it's more, maybe it's less. I I don't think we have exact guidance until like two years from now. We'll settle.
Yeah, they keep pushing it off. They're not, they were gonna say, you know, originally I was gonna get guidance in July. Then they said September. Then they said, hey, wait, it was twenty percent. They said, hold on, it's not a guaranteed cut. People are cutting down. So they said, just wait. So the reports are coming and the state obviously doesn't have money. So they keep saying, you know, absent a federal help, there's gonna be cuts, but they're not saying specifically what it is, how much.
What's the, what's, New York's on a calendar budget year? When when do they have to pull the rug out if they have no choice?
Yeah, people push this, yeah, I don't think they
Okay, so they could push this
So I could see this being, you know, you're right. We have, we had the election, you know, everyone says, you know, a few months ago, nothing, a lot of people said it's not gonna happen before the election. It's gonna happen after. So now we're gonna see.
Yeah, I mean
That was the guidance about two months ago. They said, you're never, and I was surprised, but they said, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see it.
In my mind, it's not a job for the current Senate. So that that means January. So
Matt, about what?
The current Senate's done with Bennett Business. They're not gonna take up anything new this year.
So we do have a spending freeze, not a, it's not a strict, you know, we have uh, educationally, everything education has to get approved now that, you know, comes to me and we decide if we need to do that. Obviously, we're supporting our education. But we have a pretty much very strict spending right now. Health and safety gets approved. Uh, but a lot, we're really trying to cut back on conference, all those things. We're really cut, non-discretionary things we're cutting back on. Uh, we are supporting our students and, you know, we're taking, we're very cautious. Like I said, we did, we banked money and we put money before the situation. Hopefully, it's a year, a two-year, probably, you know, a couple of year problem, but you know, that's that's kind of how we're looking at it right now. But once we get updates, you know, you're right, now I'm gonna see where we're gonna go. And I think this year, like I said, I banked over a million bucks for this year. So next year, the budget year though, is gonna be very challenging.
They have not held back the last two months, uh, last two state aid payments, but the ones previous to that is what people in the hotels, the urban districts, you know, that laid off locally four hundred people um, in reaction to them knowing that if that twenty percent became a reality, that they wouldn't be able to meet their spending plan. So um, it's just a wait and see at this point. But you're right, the the Department of the Budget gave the governor discretion over different lookback periods. And they have not really made any decisions in the context of those periods that they set up initially. And the next one, I think, is December thirty-first.
But it, yeah, and but it seems based on my reading of the newspapers, we're not gonna see anything before uh, the middle of December, end of December. So
I would assume that. I don't think we're gonna know right now.
But you know, not to go down too far down the rabbit hole, but the challenge is going to be if um, if one of the scenarios is that we experience a shutdown like we did in the spring where um, we have to close the school buildings and go full virtual K twelve. Um, we're we're gonna have a dilemma on our hands. Um, you know, last year, we had already had a approved budget. We had money in in, you know, offers and we made a decision to make sure that we kept everyone whole. Um, districts aren't in that same position this year. We are to look at a three, four month hiatus or um, quarantine. We would have to take a serious look at um, our options in terms of potential layoffs and layoffs and some of the other tools that other districts have had to do. Um, you know, we just keep so many people busy for so long. And that has major implications for a district like us. I can't even imagine um, you know, uh, with the shortage we already have in transportation, uh, that that would be devastating to to a department like that. So it's not something we will do arbitrarily or do um, you know, by choice, but I think we have to push comes to shove, and when we're in that situation, we're gonna have to have those very difficult discussions regarding that.
Any questions?
Go ahead, Dan.
I'd be very surprised to saw any aid resolution like February. And I'd like to say years past, we had some worry in our community about excess funds laying around, so-called laying around. I'd like to remain the plodding of I'd like to remain the plodding of Mr. Chuddy, Mike Chuddy, in our district policy.
Oh, absolutely.
Reserves and finding reserves and laying aside.
Yep.
God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Right back at you in the Finance Committee. Pat?
The Finance Committee on November 29th. The topic of discussion that day, that meeting was the upcoming ESP and CSEA contract negotiations. So Mike had put together a presentation for us to look over. Essentially, it covered for the members of the committee, the composition of both of the unions. One being mostly the clerical side of the House administration support and the other being maintenance and food service and those individuals. He also compared the terms of the contract, the current contracts with those of surrounding districts. And, and also laid out the corresponding inflation indices of the last couple of years. So we took a look at that, discussed it, and it's going to be something to consider, you know, for the forthcoming upcoming budget. In the new year. And Mike is going to go over some of that later on today, but the rest of it later on this season. So we'll be covering that. And our next meeting is scheduled for November 19th. The subject on that will be the various reserve lines. So they'll be discussing that in the future meeting.
Very timely.
Very timely.
Anybody have any questions for Pat or comments? All right. C-Plat, anybody make that, Beth?
Yeah. All right. Last Tuesday morning. Everybody was there except for Nancy Jackson because she thought it was on Wednesday. I had it on my, I actually had it on my calendar for both days. So it was very easy for people to have been confused because for the launch today, they had decided first. There was no representatives from the Friends Reports. We really didn't have much of a report from the, from the library. We, they, we honestly agree that they're going to have co-chairs this year. Jean North and Jane Hirschhouse are taking the co-chairs for the vice president. And Julie said that the library is open pretty much the same hours as they were before. But people can only, they can only have a small number of people in there, but can never stay more than 30 minutes. There, there was, there's some questioning about what's going to happen with the pain in, because there is not a bathroom there. But it looks like they're going to be able to use the town hall, which will allow it then to continue being there. And the only really new business is Jean North and Jane Hirschhouse. And Nancy are going to review the plan for, new plan for library director, how we evaluate. And that will be the strategic plan. And the others, the strategic plan was tabled until the next meeting, which will be on February 6th.
Matt?
I just want to add for Mike's, Chris's benefit and if you're not already aware, of course, the Chatham Public Library is falls under the school district supervision. That's a little bit unusual in the region here.
It's the whole state of New York.
Yeah.
Where do you live? Out western part of the state. I, I look, yeah.
I, I suspect it has something to do with the fact it's an original Carnegie library. It probably got to go to the school district pretty early. But it got the, the branch here on Woodbridge and like a one-room satellite in tiny little micro village of Canaan.
Apparently without a bathroom.
Never really had a bathroom anyway, did it?
No, no, it's something that currently don't have, they've never had one.
Cut down the oak tree that used to heat outside of it.
But that's, whatever context is missing there.
Will the public library hours change based on the state's guidance?
I'm going to, I'm going to divert that question. I know Julie has stayed in contact with the library associations in the greater capital region and that you follow all the guidelines for libraries. We've been very careful for, for a long time. It was drive-up service and we weren't open physically at all. And now we're allowing some patrons to physically be there. I don't know if anybody can speak to it.
They are, they, the hours are the same as they were before the lockdown. And they're taking some brows. They can come in, pick up holes. You can have a, you can call and order a book. They can buy a copy. Group size pickup. You can use computers, but you are, you have to make an appointment for the computer. It's 30 minutes to use the computer. And one family at a time, she's got the sound of science. One family at a time in the children's room. And, and of course social distancing, just like everywhere else in our society.
But it, it's also worth noting that they were fiscal agent and we have oversight, but they are pretty independent. They have their own, they have their own community board, their own director and we just provide oversight.
We did include them, a few items in the last capital project to maintain the infrastructure there. And the only other thing to make note of is, and maybe I'm stating the obvious, but just as we were able to kind of pivot and go full remote with our students because of the planning that's gone in over the last few years and giving our students devices. Overdrive, you can take out electronic ebooks. Some of the programs that had traditionally been offered in person now offered virtual. And like we've experienced, the added benefit that now sometimes you're no longer constrained by geographic location. You're getting people that are participating in some of these programs from all over the country. And, and you hear reports of this even in schools, you know. So I think there's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to kind of expand our reach. And I think, I don't know if it was Rachel last year was maybe taking advantage of some of the Spanish classes. And, you know, so we've got a lot of good stuff on the website too. And that was.
And there's, and they're still running some of their classrooms, classes per se.
That's awesome.
I think Phil has, they're actually the author. They have often have authors in, and most of them have canceled with Phil Peladino, who's actually a retired teacher from the school district. Wrote a book about his and his wife's last five years. And he's actually been doing a Zoom meeting about that in November.
That's great.
I'd like to give a shout out for the Canaan Library, if you don't mind. Also part of our, part of our district. I think it's a co-class. And in our budget, it opens six hours a week. And the state just, I think Beth just told us, the state changed to the new mandate that any of our public libraries have to have bathrooms. Julie went to the town of Canaan. The town hall is right next to the library. The town board said, you're welcome to use our facilities. So they gave her a key in case the library was open when the town hall wasn't open. But the set, the figure that got, that I was so impressed with, they're open six hours a week. Little town of Canaan, they check out over 40 books a week. Now, that's pretty impressive to me. I don't know if it is to anyone else, but I think it's, it is, it's very impressive to me. And it's just one of those old time things that have gone on here in our school district for years and years. And I'm, I'm so happy that Julie went along with this and, and was able to keep the library open.
That's awesome. She's a great director. We're very fortunate to have her.
Okay. All right. Everybody set? Thank you, Beth. R32, be resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda, I through K as written. Can I get a motion? I get a second? Any questions or comments?
Want to comment? First question?
Refining that, I would like to congratulate and thank Deborah Roberts, 32 years of service. Awesome. Enjoy your retirement and thank you for everything you've done for us. If you want to come back as a sub, I'm understanding that. So thank you, Deborah.
Hey, I'll second that because she actually was a TA in my classroom at one point. I never take that to like, well, Chris, I taught in Chatham for 35 years before I retired.
She started when she was eight.
I, I can't find it, but it was not, it was not a critical comment or anything. So you can move on.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Keep looking for that. Matt? Future agenda items. This is a section we put in to not tie up our meetings so long. And you'll read about it in the handbook. It's, if one person has, we can't get to a, a quick answer or we want to look into something in the future, somebody puts out the idea and future agenda. We kind of go run around the table to make sure that there's not a simple answer already or that it may be, a lot of times a new board member doesn't realize something happened eight or 10 years ago. We can explain it quick. So we decide if it goes in the parking lot of future agenda items. So now when I ask, does any board members have any items for the future you're looking to? Matt?
I'm not, I don't want to give self homework here necessarily. However, I think given our, our increased dependency on technology, we as a board should think and come up with some guidance on what is the standard that we're trying to meet in terms of technology delivery? Now that it's a, it's a critical infrastructure. Certainly I'm open to recommendations from leaderships. But I think that has not been a topic of discussion, you know, Chatham before. And I'd rather be proactive in the coming years.
Also, I've scheduled Giles to come in the first meeting in December. I guess then I'll do it virtually and update us kind of from the beginning of this issue to where I hope we're going to be at that point. And we can begin to also address that. The other thing that we have in the hopper is we still have Matt's suggestion. Haven't forgotten about this, just waiting for the right timing, is to survey our parents in terms of how they're feeling and how we're doing and, and in terms of any suggestions. So we haven't forgotten about that and we'll be doing that sometime between the holidays. I think is a good time to do that.
So I, so I agree with Matt's suggestion to put that into future agenda, to run around the.
What, exactly what was?
Get an update on where we're headed with our tech and.
I, I think I'd like to be a little more specific. So I think the updates are good. We get updates on technology once a year and it sounds like we're going to get a topical based update. But I think as a, as a policy body, we should be thinking about what is the goal of technology? And, you know, obviously furthering education, but more specifically, we want to make sure it's available all the time. How much are we willing to pay for that? You know, instead of handling whatever random technology issues may come up, to really just decide what type of emphasis and make sure we apportion the resources, because this being rapid is expensive.
So the other opportunity, and I have to verify this, I believe, and, and this is, this was a good mandate that came out a decade ago. But our technology plan will be due to the state, I believe, at the end of the school year. It's a three-year plan that kind of attempts to do that same kind of thing. What is your vision? What is your reach? You know, what are some of the objectives? In, in terms of plan, there's many different components to it. I do not believe there's been one that's been developed or due since I've been here. This will be the first. So this will be an opportunity for us to ask some of those questions and kind of update some of that information.
So, so maybe early in that development process, we can look at what's there and think about.
And, you know, coincident to that, now that I'm sitting here, it's a wonderful opportunity. Remember, we still have some of our smart schools bond money sitting there, right? We strategically spent a small portion of that to update our phone system, which was critically, critically needed. But we, we have some $400,000 that we have sitting there. And rather than just spend it for the sake of spending it, we wanted to wait until we got a very strategic discussion about that. I will tell you that I, you know, that is something that will be under Lisa Rude's purview that is consistent with her background and what she's done in other organizations. And she'll help us navigate that process. And part of that is to have stakeholders come together. Parents come together, administrators, teachers come together and be a part of the narrative of that, of that plan and of that, of what we need. I, you know, I have my own preconceived notion in terms of some areas of weakness, in terms of technology that we might need to address. But I don't want to drive that process and should be stakeholders. So.
That's Chris. Chris?
I don't know if there's a list of committees.
There is. You'll get it in your handbook.
Is technology one of them?
Um, no. No.
But it, it's.
It may be.
May perhaps be timely to think about that considering the criticality level we reach here.
I'm actually, I've already been thinking of reviewing our committees. Anyways, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what, what's appropriate is a technology committee for which a board member is a member of. I don't think the board needs a technology committee.
Right.
Right.
And we do, you know, we, we have to, and again, we're along the lines of smart schools. We have to have a committee formed to review that plan. And I think if we, and there has to be parent representation, teacher representation, student reputation. I think student voice is real important here as well. Just, just so you know, the new board members are assigned to every committee now.
And no, so, yeah, yeah. So I mean, just quick to answer your question, we do, we have an audit. We have finance committee, we have secret committee, we have policy committee, we have facilities committee. We have vision, mission and wellness committee. And I know I'm forgetting four or five others.
I audited several committees I was not invited to my first year. So just, just one meeting to understand, but.
So, but, but it's all in the handbook. And, you know, we tried to invite a community member to each. And like I said, we just lost a community member to our policy. So we're, we're going to be back into the committee work again, assignments, things like that. So I think it's great future agenda item. That's the board agreement.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Matt.
We don't do curriculum. As, as Al said, if we had a, a board member to be on it, you know, I mean, I certainly couldn't. Denise couldn't. I don't know.
I stayed at a Holiday Inn, so I mean.
Technology, I'm sure we have someone on this floor that could be active in it.
Yes.
Just yours and.
Sorry. I think a lot of them are going to be answered, but we can help you out.
Does the facilities committee address?
Yes, that's exactly what it's for.
Now, that's part of your expertise and be happy to, you know, go into more detail in terms of that. There's certain requirements that schools have in terms of the annual visual inspections and building condition surveys. And those. the annual visual inspections and building condition surveys, and those begin to drive the conversation about future capital project agreements, but, you know.
That's the committee I spoke to you about that you were slated for, but with everything that happened, wasn't bringing it in.
Right, the next five years, and you do.
January 22.
22?
We have to do a visual inspection in this next year, we have to complete the BCS by December 21, and it's due, I think, in January 22.
December 21, I mean.
So that.
Right, so you're gonna do it in January 22.
Okay, thank you.
We have hired an outside agency to do a study on all our buildings, properties, facilities. That's an important role by that.
And as you can imagine, input from various, the buildings and ground supervisor, the building principals, the custodians, and people who are kind of in the trenches and saying, you know, if we don't replace that control system, or if we don't replace this, we're gonna have to spend a good money after that. And this last Capitol project that we're just, in the midst of putting to bed, you know, hit some major infrastructure items, and, but we didn't get, the list was not all inclusive, so that will be the starting point for the next, we need to start to have that conversation.
Gotta say, as the chair of the facilities, I didn't realize the outhouse was going and getting in the library, though. So.
We did put a bathroom on second floor of the middle school.
Yes, yes. All right. Anybody else have any items for future agenda? Okay, we'll keep on moving. Second public comment, how, how are we doing? Any hands?
We still have eight trustee people, and we'll ask if any of them are gonna raise their hand.
All right. So we're gonna, I anticipate we're going into executive session, so be resolved that the board.
I told you there was one, sorry.
There's one. Well, be resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session discussion. Like a motion.
Someone, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to point Sal as a district pro temp. Get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't anticipate returning to open session, so.